We'll call our meeting to order. First, we'll begin with invocation by Pastor Joe Phillips of New Life Ministers International, and a pledge of allegiance after that by Marnie Yule and Sir.
First of all, let's take a time of silence for Kayla Mueller and her family, just believing that the comfort's going to come to them in a special time. Seems like that from time to time, we have great losses in this city and this area. But let's take a time of silence and prayer. Lord, we thank you today for the opportunity to come into your presence. We thank you today that as you direct the direction of this city and its business that needs to be attended today. We thank you that you direct us even when we can't see you. We thank you today that the business will be handled quickly and orderly, and that you will have your will in all of our lives, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Marnie, Zach.
And if you'll please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Marnie. Thank you, Zach. Okay, roll call. Diane.
Mayor Skug.
Present.
Vice Mayor Nye. Here. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall is absent this evening. Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, move on to scheduled announcements and presentations. Chamber of Commerce, Marnie, you're back up, and Zach? Zach will do it.
Zach here, Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce, Membership Services. Hope you're all doing well tonight. Just want to introduce the newest members to the chamber. It's my pleasure to introduce William and Anessa Morrison. They own and operate Naturally OCD Cleaning. So if you guys would say a couple words, that'd be great.
Thank you for the time to say something, and hello. My name's Anessa Morrison, and I'm OCD. We do business-to-business cleaning. That includes move-ins, move-outs, offices, manufacturing plants, and things of that nature. We're a family-owned business, family-operated. My kids are helping out. My parents are helping out. And we all just moved here a few months ago into Prescott Valley, and it's wonderful. Everybody has been so helpful and nice, and I am blessed to be able to be here and do business with you fine people. Thank you.
Thank you. Dwayne? Twenty minutes, Dwayne.
I'm done. She said it all.
You want to give us your address and phone number, however we get in touch with you?
Yes, I have some cards that I brought with me today for anyone who is interested. Our phone number is 928-830-3935, and I love to answer the phone. So I'd be more than happy to pass business cards to anyone who would like to get a quote. We're reasonable based upon the other businesses doing the same type of thing in the area.
You might repeat your phone number.
Sure. 928-830-3935.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and congratulations. By the way, it's a blessing to have you.
Oh, thank you.
Zach, you got anything else to add?
It's great to be here. Always a pleasure to be in front of you guys, and that's all I got.
Good. Marnie, any one to add to it?
Yes, actually, no, to be honest, I'm not going to take an opportunity not to talk Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Prescott Valley Days will be held June 18 through the 21st coming up this 2015. It's the 37th Annual, and I know there was some discussion on which weekend. Usually, we have the first weekend. It is the third weekend, just the way the dates of the month fall and because of our contract with the carnival. So June 18 through the 21st, 37th Annual Prescott Valley Days, and we're working on all the plans. And also, I would like to join everyone in Prescott Valley in welcoming the AIA State Tournament Wrestling Championships here to Prescott Valley Events Center, because there are buses and people all over town, and it is so exciting to see all of them coming to Prescott Valley and kind of spreading their love and little dollars here in our wonderful community. So let's make them feel welcome, and I'm pleased that they're here. So, yes, Larry?
I was wondering, who's sponsoring the parade this year?
The par- oh, as every year, the parade is being sponsored by the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club. Roar! So, thank you. So again, and the theme is dreams can come true. So I think that's something that maybe a lot of us can resonate and find afloat, an idea, and a thought to participate in the parade, and we're looking forward to some very good participations. So we've got a great team working on that at the club, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And Happy Valentine's Day to everyone.
Well, thank you. Okay, we move on to Citizen of the Month, Unable to Attend, so we're going to have to table that one. So we'll go from there. Comments or communications? Wait a minute, go to number six. A certificate of appreciation to Patty for 10 years of service. Can you pronounce that Patty Sterpka? Is that close?
Yeah.
Can we meet you up front here, Patty? Bring your special with you?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Go ahead.
They were all written by Patty?
All written by Patty. That's correct, Larry. Patty Sterpka, 10-year service award. Wow. Patty began employment with the town 10 years ago, starting in the position of administrative specialist, supporting the Public Works and Utilities Departments. She has worked very hard and learned the skills to earn her reclassification as an administrative assistant. Patty is a native of Arizona and is actively involved in running 5Ks, 10Ks, and half marathons, and has received several medals for her efforts. She is celebrating 10 years of marriage this year with her devoted husband, and recently welcomed a great niece and nephew into the world. There is no prouder great aunt. Patty is a very caring and thoughtful person with a wonderful sense of humor. She can make you laugh so hard you forget you're at work. She enjoys being helpful whenever she can and does everything in her power to make your work life better. We can't imagine a workday without her presence. She has earned the respect and trust of all of her fellow workers. Patty cheers you on the ability to work with the diverse group we have and finding the humor in the different personalities that make up our departments. You play a huge part in our success, and greatly, we appreciate your hard work and dedication. Thank you for choosing us to be the team you work with and allowing us to be a part of your career. We look forward to another 10 years of working with you. Thanks, Patty.
Now, we have to ask the Public Works Department what the usual procedure is. Any comments, Laura?
I do. If you had put up with them and handled them for 10 years, they should each be giving you a medal.
Anyone else got any comments?
They would just be in a lot of trouble if they did what they normally do. I know that.
Really?
Tomorrow would be bad.
I was wondering why the Public Works Department was here. Now we know, and so they must cherish her work very much. I'm curious, where were you born, in Arizona, as a native?
Phoenix.
Phoenix, okay. Because I'm a native Arizonan myself, but Tucson. So there's a few of us around.
Good. Marty?
Yeah, 10 years of service. I think that's great, and the fact that many of your fellow workers, that you probably have the fun of bossing around all day, to get this many of Public Works workers out here, I think that's, you know, that shows what a great person you are and, you know, what a leader you are to them. So congratulations to you, and I look forward to seeing you here for many more. Thank you.
Rick?
To spend 10 years working with that group of people, you certainly deserve more than we're giving you tonight. But thank you very much.
Is anyone going to defend yourself?
Guilty as charged.
Boy, I don't know what's that, Patty. Usually, they do a much more of a generous routine than they're doing tonight. You got an appreciation award from the town of Prescott Valley, presented to Patty Sterpka for an appreciation for 10 years of dedicated service, February 2005 through February 2015, and your pin with an emerald. Now, it's your turn to speak. You get 20 minutes.
About 30 seconds.
20 minutes, 20 seconds. It's the same thing.
I just want to thank Council, Larry, Harvey. You're wonderful. I appreciate all your support in the last 10 years, and it's been a pleasure to work here. Thank you very much. Oh, and the animals. Ah, look at all the animals. And my wonderful supervisor, Deanna, I couldn't do what I do without her. She has a lot of faith in me.
Deanna, do you have any comments?
Oh, here she goes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. She just did. She just did, man.
I said it all in the accolades, but to add to that, I couldn't do what I do for our departments without her. She's my right-hand person, and amazing when I throw things at her all through budget, talking to myself, and she's...
Let me know when I'm answering.
I know. Let me know when you're talking to me. It's a pleasure to work with her. She makes me take breaks and makes me laugh, so, and it makes the workplace a lot more enjoyable and keeps all those guys in line. You guys are wonderful. Thank you for being here. I really appreciate it. Thank you for showing your love and support for what she does. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Patty, I think we need you on a council. Keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
A accomplished five-letter council.
Okay, next is comments and communication. Anyone for the council have any comments, communications?
Nothing?
Well, that certainly was a mellow award-giving for the Public Works. But anyway, thank you all for coming. Okay, we go on to the, all matters discussed under consent agenda. They're considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Includes the approval of January 22 Council meeting approving a Series 12 liquor license application for Kitchens Incorporated DBA Gabby's Grill located at 2982 North Park Avenue, Suite B, Kelly C. Cabral applicant, and I believe that's the one that used to be known as Fireside. Approving a Series 12 liquor license application for Origin Bistro LLC located at 3050 Windsong Drive, Suite 101, Jordan Wheeler applicant. Approving a UVR WP Coalition to apply for United States Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart Feasibility Studies grant and the United States Department of Agriculture Natural Resource Conservation Service invocation grant. Approving accounts payable. Approving resolution number 1905 to authorize the matching of town funds up to $108,750 for Windsong Drive pedestrian improvement project. And approving the award of a change order to the current contract with Graham Contractors Incorporated for additional installation of hot-melt crack seal materials on specified streets in the spring of 2015 in the amount up to $18,840, and purchase the necessary crack seal materials from Craftco Incorporated per an ADOT contract in the amount of $12,349.65. Does Council want to pull anything for discussion, or do you want to approve it as a whole? Marty? Oh, Mary? Who's, Mary, are you going?
All right. I'll make a motion to accept all items under consent agenda by electronic vote.
And I will second that, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote? And that is approved. Okay, we go on to number nine, new business for action, consideration of the second reading by title only, and passage of ordinance number 801, adopting amendments made to Town Code Chapter 14 subdivisions, Chapter 7 building, and Chapter 13 zoning to conform to Town's general plan 2025, earlier declared by resolution number 1897 as a public service document. Carmen, do you have anything to add to that? We have discussed this. Any questions, anyone? If not, I would ask the town clerk to read ordinance number 801 by title only for the first reading. Diane?
Mayor, that would be for the second reading.
Second reading, my fault.
Of ordinance number 801. An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference to document entitled Amendments to Chapter 14 subdivisions, Chapter 7 building, and Chapter 13 zoning declared by resolution number 1897 to be a public record, which amends Chapter 14 subdivisions, Chapter 13 zoning, and Chapter 7 building of the Town Code to conform to the Town's general plan 2025 and provide greater flexibility in design, density, and development requirements for projects subject to development plans, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I would ask, shall the ordinance pass? Do you want to set the vote, Diane?
Yes, Mayor.
And that passes. Thank you, Diane. Okay, we'll move on to number 10A. Consideration of reading ordinance number 803 by title, approving the exchange of parcels by the Town of Prescott Valley and John Carlyle for the Viewpoint Drive Improvement District. Ron?
As always, I like to have neat pictures up here. This is pretty straightforward land exchange. This is the viewpoint drive intersection at Long Look. It's the latest phase of construction for the ongoing viewpoint connector. This was completed in 2013 for just under $600,000. It's in the interim condition right now. It's not at full buildout. The shaded area will represent, represents the full buildout area, which will include additional travel lanes, landscaped median sidewalk. It'll be pretty much the same as what you see in Navajo Drive right now. If you notice on the Carlyle property, that shaded area encroaches just up there in the upper left-hand corner of the property. So that's one of the areas that we'd like to acquire. The other area is the triangular area down there in the lower-left corner of the property, and that's what we call a site triangle, and it serves two purposes. One is to ensure visibility in that area for anybody that's approaching the intersection, especially as the intersection gets wider, which this one will. And second, it allows an area to install traffic signals. Someday, that will probably happen here as well. So that's the two areas that we would like to acquire. The shaded area, now that that's the, represents a new realignment, it's pretty much split that one town property right there, right up the middle. And the red shaded area is the compensatory area that we would relinquish to Mr. Carlyle in exchange for that. We did evaluation in-house, Kim Moon and myself. We used past examples from other land exchanges, and we feel pretty confident with the numbers that we've come up with, which you have in a memo. The aggregate areas that Mr. Carlyle would relinquish are the 520 square feet at a estimate of $1,118, and the red shaded town property is 943 square feet with a valuation of $1,414.50. So, and that's pretty much all I have. And I do want to thank Ivan, Diane, and Kim for helping me kind of hold my hand and do a lot of rewriting for me, so I appreciate it.
Good. Any questions, anyone? Pretty straightforward. Ron, I think you did a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone better make a motion? Going to die for a lack of a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to read the ordinance number 803 once by title only as emergency measure, then placed the same on final passage.
Okay.
I'll second.
The motion is a second. Would you set the vote? Thank you. Diane, if you would read the, read it by title only?
Ordinance number 803. An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, authorizing the exchange of a parcel of real property by the town for a nearby parcel needed by the town for future expansion of Viewpoint Drive, and declaring this ordinance to be an emergency measure pursuant to Arizona revised statutes Section 19-142B and Section 2-05-060 of the Prescott Valley Town Code.
Okay, thank you, Diane. And since there was a motion as an emergency measure, I would ask that, shall the ordinance pass? Could you set the vote again, Diane? Thank you, Diane.
Mr. Mayor, did you notice what a fantastic tie Ron Pine had there?
Yeah, it looks pretty sharp.
You know, I just sat there and thought, that's my, you know, my goal is to be able to wear ties like that one of these days. Orange, green, isn't that, is that orange and green? Oh, there's a little blue in there. Yeah, I'm colorblind, but those things can, you know, I can see those.
What a gentleman. That's all I can say. Thanks, Ivan. Okay, we'll move on into 10B. Consideration of approving the purchase of a model 1300 Hydra Stop Line Tapping Machine and associated accessories from HD Supply Facilities Maintenance DBA U.S. Blue Book in the amount of $30,645.53. We've studied this some. Neil, you got anything to add to it?
Actually, I don't really have anything to add. We talked about this last week, and we got two bids in, and you saw the low bid was the $30,645 and change, and so that's kind of it.
And I think we understand the machine that you're getting, so it's, looks like a good one. Council, any comments, questions, motions?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve the purchase of Model 1300 Hydra Stop Line Tapping Machine and associated accessories from HD Supply Facilities Maintenance USA Blue Book in the amount of $30,645.53 by electronic vote.
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion is a second. Would you set the vote? And that passes. Thank you, Neil. That was a good one. We move on to C. Consideration of approving professional services agreement with Stro architecture in the amount of $12,900 for architectural design services of a 3,000-square-foot storage building, and approving an amendment to the Town Engineer Agreement with Dave and Associates for civil design services in the amount of $13,405. CIP number W-372. We've studied this one, too. Anything to add to it, Neil?
No, it's just a 3,000-square-foot storage building for some expensive equipment that we have, and we'd like to get it built, so I guess that's it.
Any questions, comments, motions, commotions, promotions, demotions? Mike? Oh, Marty? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Rick.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve a professional services agreement with Stro Architect Incorporated in the amount of $12,900 for architectural design services and an amendment to the Town Engineer Agreement with Dave and Associates for civil design services in the amount of $13,405 by electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'd second the motion.
Okay, we have the motion and a second. Would you set the vote? It passes. Neil, you go ahead and put it together. Neil, you go ahead and put it together. We'll move on to number D. Consideration of approving a contract number STWSG 15-010115-17 with the Governor's Office of Children, Youth, and Families to Accept Award. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor. Mr. Council.
Jackson with you.
I'm sorry, Ivan, I don't have a tie, so...
He has one black one.
I got you, Brett.
You're the only one without a tie.
I know. I feel underdressed. We bring forward for your consideration the final adoption and approval for the STOP grant issued. It's actually a federal grant issued through the state of Arizona. I apologize, it probably should have been on your consent agenda. It was brought before you this past fall, where you approved the grant in its application form. If you need any reminders, the STOP grant is a grant that's used to establish, maintain, and improve relationships and partnerships between the courts, victim advocates, service providers, prosecution, and law enforcement for the purposes of reducing violent crimes against women and enhancing our victim services. The grant award this year will fund a full-time detective, a full-time victims advocate, and a full-time program administrator. Remaining funds will be used to cover the training and overtime costs of teaching the rest of our sworn officers the intricacies of investigating these types of crimes in actual field experience, working with victims and perpetrators. The town's matching portion for the acceptance of this grant tonight is $68,821, which is 25% of the grant award of $2,000, I'm sorry, $257,286. These amounts are less than we originally requested. That's what the state awarded, but it still allows us to continue our highly successful program, which I might say is a model for these kinds of programs throughout the state. With that, I really think it's important that I introduce the people who make this program and put these grant funds to such good use, and that's Sergeant Jake Jackson, who oversees and supervises the unit. Detective James Tobin does the lion's share of the work. Corporal Mike Williams is also heavily involved in our, in our program. And not with us tonight is the program administrator, Dorothy Shippen. And we currently do not have the victims advocate person. We are interviewing for that position right now. So with that, if the council has any questions, I'll let them answer it.
When you say victims advocate, are you talking about Tracy's position here, please?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, she's left.
Are there any questions, anyone?
No, sir.
Mary? No?
No, sir.
Yeah, Mary, Laura?
I don't, excuse me. I don't have any questions, but as I cooperate in a minimal level in this arena, I know how important it is. It's more than important. It's critical, and I applaud the success of this effort. And we all look forward to the time when all of our efforts reduce the numbers that we currently deal with, which are just outrageous. And I want to take this opportunity to thank all of you, because this isn't just a job for you. You put your heart in it, and that's very evident to me when I have exposure with you around these issues. Humbly, thank you.
Any other comments? Mary?
No, sir.
Keep your machine ready to go. I think you, gentlemen, the whole department is doing a super job, and we really appreciate that. And I know you're, you know, you're pretty well keeping pretty busy at it, so just keep up the good work.
Sadly.
Thank you. Do we keep to 20 minutes?
20 minutes, chief.
We did? Okay, good. Any other questions?
Any other questions, anyone?
Thank you.
Motions?
All right. I'd be glad to make a motion.
Mary? Okay.
A motion to approve contract number STWSG 15-010115-17 with the Governor's Office of Children, Youth, and Families to Accept the Grant Award.
I'll second.
The motion is a second. Would you set the vote? And that passes. Chief? Passed. Thank you. Okay, we move on to, consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not be here, need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Anyone care to make any comments? Kirk? Any comments?
He's hiding in his work.
He's hiding. Okay, we'll move on into the last item that I know everyone hates, and we, that's that we need a motion to adjourn.
So may.
We have a motion, a second, anyone?
I'll second.
We have a second. Would you set the vote?
Laura Lee said, Laura, Laura Lee said we should...
And that, Mary Mallory, you want us to stick your own and talk about some more?
By myself.
All by yourself. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.